Okay, good evening, everybody. It is Monday, November 18th, 6:00 PM. Time for committee in the whole. Eddie, what's your call overall?
Pop.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
All right. The first order of business is the Northeastern Ohio sewer district is going to talk about the Dome Brook Restoration Project. Restoration project. Gentlemen, your turn. Over you. Your name is?
Good evening, council members. My name is Matt Sharver. I'm the director of Watership Programs at the Northeastern Ohio Regional Sewer District. This evening I have Dennis Zaharia, who's our project manager on the Dome Brook Restoration, your North River Lake Park project. And then online is Matt Langen. He's with the St. Seville. He's our lead project manager and landscape architect. So we're here this evening to answer any questions from our October 21st presentation that we gave to councils. I know you had an opportunity to do that post, and we didn't have the opportunity to interface with you directly and answer questions. But currently, we're at the, we've moved from the 30% design stage to the 60% design stage, and we're moving along on our schedule. We hope to be moving into the 90% design by the first part, first quarter of 25, and then on into construction in 2026. So in terms of actual expenditures from the cities, if you so choose, in terms of the amenities that we're currently designing for, those expenditures wouldn't be coming until 2026. So with that, I'll pause and if there's any questions.
Can the construction will be over a time period, so that it be 2026 and 2027? Okay, I hope everybody got a chance to review the video of Shaker Heights City Council, and I'll just open it up for questions. This could be quick.
May I just? There's some value engineering that's going through right now. What does that process look like?
So we just, last week, we had a solid meeting with both administrations of Cleveland Heights and Cleveland Heights that talked through their current 60% design. Comments from the cities are due, some are six. So we were working through that process to understand not only the restoration project that the district is trying to move, the removal of the street operations, the amenities. And so we talked through the different amenities that are all currently moving forward to 100% design, and then changes to those amenities, kind of passing reductions in progress. So there were a few items that we talked about. One item in particular, the interpretive trail system closer to Lee Road, is going to be removed from the planned amenities going forward because of, we have some scheduling conflicts that we perceive, and we don't want to delay the removal of the North River Lake dam. So that is being set to the side. And then there's some additional amenities that are being refined further for additional cost savings. So we're going to continue to move forward with those items and then get the cities a refined 60% cost. But what we'd like to see happen is, as the cities' comments are due on December 6th, we'd also like the concurrence to continue to move forward on those amenities, which are currently on.
So just so I, understanding the terminology that is being used, are the amenities the things that the individual cities are adding to the project, or are the amenities just some of the features that you're putting into the overall project?
The first part. The amenities are the things that are being added to the project. So the examples would be, we've got some of the trail system, the classroom area, the overlook at Shelburne, which is the main gateway for the Cleveland Heights portion of the park. So those are the amenities.
So there's some grant applications, I believe, out that from both cities, and I suspect you won't find anything out until probably a year from now. I would suspect if those grant dollars came in, would we be able to add those things back into the project?
Absolutely. So we're designing this forward, so that these, all the amenities can be implemented at a later stage. But right now, we'll, there's many items that will be of benefit to both cities to implement now in the entirety of the project. So we're setting this stage for both options.
So the bid docs that are going to be cleared together, will that include all the amenities, and they'll just be add-ons? Is there better word you guys use than essentially?
That's correct. So all the amenities will be designed to 100%.
Okay, that sounds, that's good news. Thanks for sharing that.
When you list those amenities, will they also have individual cost line items so that we can look at it à la carte? At what, because to see where we are at that point in terms of financial?
We do. So currently, right now, in the 60% design set, there is a breakout of the costs for the overall amenities and line items for.
All right, then that'll maintain it. Thank you.
Any other questions? My understanding is it didn't change much, the design from the 30% to the 60%. Kind of kept things.
Overall, essentially, the restoration project is the same, certainly refinements, as we try to value engineer the design forward.
And Mayor, are we budgeted, is this part of the 2025 budget for the first payment on this?
So that was a conversation I wanted to have with council before really making a decision about that. I think it's probably wise for us to set some money aside, probably less than one and a half million, so that we can have some money available in 2026, when I anticipate this being spent, and then again next year, to fulfill our sort of part of the deal when it comes to the investment that the cities are going to. But it might be that we don't want to do that, don't necessarily need to, because I think that we do have potentially the way we're called to pull that money in 2025 during that budget cycle as well. I don't know that there's some major substantive reason why we shouldn't wait, why we would, you know, choose one or the other. So I guess just to have the money set aside would be useful, but ultimately, I'm not sure that it technically matters when we pull it.
Again, any other questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Big mess.
All right. So ARPA update. Right. For, is Russell speaking or making?
Yeah.
So.
I can go around them. So there's been a lot of progress since we've asked, um, RFPs, sorry, RFQs have gone out for a number of housing programs and, um, streetscape sort of studies related to commercial. I believe we have something on tonight for our concrete, or so our driveway sidewalks, pathways, portion of the ARPA allocation. We're still starting at the last few nonprofits, but those should be in the contract fairly soon. And then, no, what else is worth mentioning? ADA improvements to the bathrooms, but, uh, we're a little bit of a stretch because that's not something I've ever done before, but I think we're almost there, and we should be releasing that online today.
Are you talking about the Kane Park paddles?
Yeah. Oh yeah, so let's say clearance, so we've gotten our RQ results for that. Well, next is calculating and going over all the responses, so we'll see if we'll need council legislation. They may be below. Those should be, uh, next RFQ, ready to get on their contract.
Questions?
We have to pass legislation regarding the Dennis and Purefield.
Yes.
We've still got the.
It's going to be a, I'm sorry.
No, no.
It's anticipated to be a TIPS cooperative purchasing program contract, but based upon the amount it will require, it doesn't require competitive bidding, but it will require council.
I think maybe at our next meeting.
That's the hope, yeah.
Okay. And one, one other thing, is it possible for us to get a status for like all of the projects where they're at?
Okay.
You know, I know Jim and I have asked for the status spreadsheet, something that that sort of details all $38 million worth of projects, where we are with them. We're getting very close to the end of December. It's got to be something you guys don't need to invent for us. You got to have it. I mean, I imagine that's how you folks are managing it, but you know, council really needs to see it. And with all due respect, I think I've asked at least three, maybe four times in a row for this. I'm feeling pretty sad that I haven't gotten it.
I'm looking at a spreadsheet right now. I just need to clean it up and, you give us some of this.
You would be a hero in my mind if you can get that. But I think that would be ideal. Thank you.
Does it need to be bright and shiny, or do you just?
Shiny or the better.
Isn't it verify everything?
He's cleaning it up.
But, but I mean, I think this is, you know, clearly this, this team that, that the city has assembled to sort of, and I'll use the word save the day, has really, you know, I've seen remarkable progress since, you know, I was appointed onto this council. And I just think as far as our fiduciary responsibility, you know, we really do need to look at every penny, and the only way to really look at it is really look at everything holistically. You know, we're picking and choosing things that are important and putting those fires out, and I, and that's good work. We just need to look at it holistically. So thank you for.
I think until the revenue replacement was set at amount, there was sort of a little bit of a loophole that provided us with having the most accurate spreadsheet for you.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I might, there's also a couple of projects, one of which will need an additional city contract to be authorized by council, and two of which may not, because they've already been, the bidding for them has been authorized. We're expecting final design specs on the Strand project and on the Coventry parking garage elevator work on the 25th, so that that'll enable just enough time for state law compliant bidding, advertising and bidding, and then those will be opened up presumably, and the plan is in time to advise council at the second meeting in December of the decision on what bids, you know, were accepted and, or excuse me, received and accepted and approved. And that doesn't require council action, but there is a requirement for the mayor to authorize or to advise council. And then finally, roughly the same type of timetable, the specs for the dressing room renovations at Kane Park should be coming in. That will then require a contract that would require council approval, and that may, just putting this on your radar to be the Grinch, that may require a special meeting after your second meeting currently scheduled in December, if possible.
We have a tentatively scheduled December 9th as an additional meeting. So you're talking about something after December 16th?
Right. That's, and that's what I wanted to mention. I recognize there's an additional meeting already scheduled, but I don't think that the timing of that meeting will allow that issue to be addressed, but we'll keep you apprised.
Okay.
Council, is the first meeting, okay, so we received an update that there's a meeting on the 9th. Presumed that that is replacing the first meeting in December.
No.
Because it's not in the schedule.
No, it's not. It's, it's, it's an additional meeting, and it's tentative, because we don't know where we're going to be with the budget.
I, I would much rather having something in the schedule, tentative or not.
Exactly.
So we could hold the date. It's a really hard time. Am I the only one that really kind of did not understand that this was, that there was no meeting on the first, it was being switched to the 9th?
No, it's not switched. There, there's two people.
No, but he's asking, did everybody else understand that that was?
Oh, maybe it was. Yeah, I'm asking if I'm just the stupid one around the table.
Well, that's.
I think we need to do a little bit better job in our calendars and our schedules and, you know, book these things, but that's not here. This is not part of the agenda we have talked about.
Similar along those lines, I understand that there's some requests for spreadsheets, but I know this is something I brought on, up on council. I know that when we make a request to staff, if we're going to ask them for something or repeatedly ask them, I want to make sure that this is an agreement that we have with council, that there's something written, a written request for something like that, because we're back to one or two council people being able to ask for something again, and then I can ask for something, and then she can ask for something. I want to make sure that any request that the administration or the staff gets is coming from council as a whole, so that we're clear this is something that all of us want, and expectations are set on when we would like to get that back. I don't think that happened in this case with the spreadsheet, because I can see anything in writing that case or an agreement around the table. So I want to make sure going forward, we get back to that, so that they're not getting multiple requests from us and stating that council has asked for this. I just want to make sure that it's clear when there is a full council request for information from a reporter or anything, that there's agreement at this table, and there's an understanding of how we're going to get that, maybe when, and that's going to cut back on some of this. Because again, we're back to one request here, two requests there. I want to make sure that there's agreement at this table before we ask staff for any type of documentation report. That way, it makes it easier to follow up on, because I have no idea when this was requested or when anyone else asked for that. So I just want, for that clarity, I just want to make sure this is something that we all agree upon, because in the past, it's just to add color to this, it's caused maybe some folks do some work that maybe the rest of us didn't want them to do. I think that's the case at this point, but I just want to make sure that we're all agreeing before we send out staff or make a request to staff to do something like we, we were prior.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I just know that every time Council Posh has brought it up to sit in here at this table, so, I mean, I would assume people would speak up and say, hey, I don't really think that's necessary, but I never heard anybody say that. I, I do assume that we're all on the same page if somebody says, you know, we could really use this, and nobody says, nah, I don't need it, that, but, but maybe, maybe in the future, we'll just couch it differently. Everybody agree that we need this.
I put a request in our detail over the weekend.
If a decent amount of the money, Director Hannah, actually, I'm sorry, this question is for you. I'm sorry. So a decent amount of the money, the ARPA funds have been allocated to nonprofits. If a nonprofit doesn't spend its money, then that has to go back to the federal government, right? I'm, I'm assuming that that's the case, but outside of that, we as a city have control over the rest of the spending. So is there, I guess, Director Hannah, Mr. Mayor, is there anything that we're worried that we won't be able to encumber before the deadline? We can't control the nonprofits, what they ultimately spend, but does your gut tell you there's anything that we?
I would just say that given the calendar and some of the dates that I just mentioned, like having specs on the 25th, going out to advertise those immediately, and then proceeding to award a contract, you know, we're trying to manage that process as closely as possible so that we get bids, because it can turn out that either you don't get anything, or you get something that you can't accept. And so we're trying to thread that needle and make sure that we, that the circumstances are such that we're likely to get, you know, more, hopefully more than one bid that the city can consider and approve those projects.
So kind of along those lines, and then maybe this is for interim Director Schuster, I don't know, but I know we took ARPA money, we put it in some banks or one bank, I don't know, and that there was interest accrued. Is that been, I, I, you know, maybe that's another line item we could have in the spreadsheet, but I, I, has that been allocated? I guess, A, did we get interest, and B, if so, has that been allocated?
Got it. The interest is just put in the general fund will be earned on that.
Oh, so it's not part of ARPA expenditures?
No.
Okay. Got it. I mean, I didn't know that until this moment. Yep.
Do we have to give the interest back if it's not spent? We don't need the answer for that right now, but.
That hasn't been part of any of the guidance that I've seen.
Okay.
All right. Any other ARPA update questions? All right, we're on to Oak Tree Veterinary Hospital, and is that Brian Anderson?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
I'll go up here if, if, it's assured of chairs at the table right now. But, so you all should have received an additional memo as well that really details, you know, quite a bit, I guess, of what we're asking and kind of, and kind of the why. So this is something that the staff level, we've been thinking about over the years now, and this was really a good project, we felt, to move forward with this type of a TIF structure. And originally, when TIFs were first sort of rolled out and created in various places, it really was devised as a means to create revenue for public infrastructure. And as time has gone on, TIFs, as we, especially as we've used them most recently, are becoming part of the capital stat, paying for private improvements as part of it. So this kind of brings it back to really the roots of TIF. So essentially, you know, with this project, you know, they've made a very large investment there on Taylor Road and their new facility. It's going to incur a pretty significant increase to the property valuation there. And, you know, and what we're proposing then is to put this TIF in place that will allow the city to recoup some of that new property tax value directly back into the city that we can refer this for, for infrastructure. And again, this is, this is the first one, but I think the hope would be, as we have projects like this that come forward in the future, move towards a, you know, a practice of putting these types of TIFs in place. And we've seen, you know, there's a number of cities that have been doing this on a consistent basis, but you end up with 10, 15, 20 of these on the books at any one time as they progress over a 30-year period, you can look at a very significant additional chunk of money that's going towards city infrastructure. So the way it's proposed and structured, it's a non-school TIF, so the school is kept whole. Under the ORC, we are required to give notice to the school district, but there is no approval through the school district that is required.
So we can do a TIF even though the building is completed? Projects that are doing it prior to?
So we need to do it this year, because they complete, they're completing the, the project and the property this year. So we have to have it in place before the new property valuation hits for next year.
So essentially, the school district gets their share of the property tax.
Correct.
But the library won't, the, the, the metro parks won't help, human services, the county monies. I'm not arguing that that's good or a bad thing. I'm, I'm looking at the memo that we have, one, one step down. Can, can you help us understand a little bit about how much value that's going to bring in on an annual basis for us?
Roughly? You know, ultimately, it depends upon what the county does with the valuation, both initially and over time. You know, there's a, you know, a total number here that we reran at some basic valuations, what the added value looks like. So I mean, it could be, you know, anywhere from, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 a year to around $30,000 a year.
Okay.
And again, it becomes, so it's about at the high end, on our projections, it could be over 30 years, $900,000 to the city. And again, if ideally, if you end up with 10, 15, 20 of these on the books, you know, that you're then collecting over time, that's a pretty significant, significant amount of money that's available for city infrastructure improvements. And we also felt this was a good one with all of the activity that's starting and going to be happening with Kane Park Village and Kane Park. We know there's additional infrastructure needs along that corridor that will benefit, benefit that property and the whole corridor as well.
So moving forward, we would either do it prior to the project being built, or we would have to wait until the project is built?
You sort of, you want to time it so that you're doing it, you know, essentially the year before the, the value is going to change at the county. So they, it was under construction earlier this year, they've just been finishing it. So we know that there will be a significant property valuation that will hit on the next, on the next round of valuations.
And so the owners are aware of that?
I've, actually, I've left them some messages about it, but it doesn't impact at all what they're paying.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time grasping this concept. So this property owner gets no benefit from this TIF?
That's not true.
No.
Okay, what's, what does the property owner, what's his benefit or her benefit?
The property owner's benefit is directly related to the infrastructure development in the general vicinity of their building. So ultimately, what we're doing is taking those payments and directing them more specifically to infrastructure needs that are in the general area of that development in the first place. So they.
And benefit that specific property. That's the test.
I guess from a property owner's standpoint, you know, I guess there's, the benefit is their property taxes are going directly to infrastructure that.
Benefits.
That benefits their property, and that may not have been the case otherwise.
Can you give me some example of what the TIF proceeds would go for that would directly benefit this property?
Roads, sewers, streetscapes, crosswalks, you know, any sort of public infrastructure in and around that area.
Things that are located adjacent to their property, is it?
It doesn't have to be necessarily adjacent. I mean, it could be, it could be any infrastructure that benefits the property. So sewer, a sewer improvement, anywhere in the city that improves the capacity and service related to that property would still be eligible, but the easier ones to mention are things like roads and streetscapes and things like that. They don't have the control devices.
On the corner, what would that be? The, the south west corner that they really just tore down, the small building?
Parking lot.
Parking lot.
Just parking. Okay.
Just a quick question, just an example of this, this is a great idea, I think, in terms of reinvesting back into the neighborhood. Would, a couple of years ago, the masterworks property we did, would that have been a good idea, then something that we could have done this with or were no on a scale of it?
I, I guess we'd look at the, you're right, the scale of it, and you look at what the property was, was valued at prior, relative to how much we know through building permits they're putting in, and that's sort of making a determination whether or not there's a, you know, significant benefit that the city could realize.
That's what I thought. And the fact that the veterinary picked up the other property, and kind of combined those two, made a significant increase for that, so.
Yeah, I mean, so currently, the properties there were worth about $500,000 according to the county, and they've spent over $2 million constructing the new, the new facility. So there's going to be a really significant property change there.
And I, I wanted to give a quick example about how this kind of idea could potentially pay directly for that property and the surrounding properties, but also have, you know, assuming we, we take this possibly to a different scale, a larger benefit to the community. We all know that, you know, potholes are the bane of any municipal government's existence. We hate them, and we want to get rid of them as soon as possible, but more importantly, in a long-term fashion, we want our roads to be paved, paved well, and paved more often, right? That would make sense. We have a more regular, frequent schedule of repaving roads, then we've got fewer potholes to be concerned about in the first place, you know, and that, those sorts of things. One of the ways that this kind of thing can help is by making that money available for infrastructure needs in that specific area, which means that we can do things like if the road needs paved, we may have some money to put toward that in that particular area, and it also reduces the amount of strains on other money that we would use for similar purposes. So we might be able to, if we are invested in looking at this as a, an infrastructure improvement tactic, we may be able to free up other funds that, you know, may go for the maintenance in other areas that don't require or receive a TIF in that area. It's, it's, you know, if we're freeing up this money for those sorts of things, that means that we've got less money that we need to raise for a road improvement in that area, which means we free up money for road improvements elsewhere. That's the kind of ideas that the development should directly benefit the infrastructure in and around that development.
So if the owner is, well, we're putting the TIF, and it's going to be infrastructure funds, can the owner say that the street in front of my building, new building that I want done, can they request that from the city from using part of the TIF money?
I mean, there's, there's nothing stopping them from requesting it. I guess, you know, what actually it ends up getting used for is a larger conversation with public works and other departments, you know?
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, I was just thinking when you said that that's how the owners would benefit, because it helps the infrastructure around their actual property. And if someone wanted. And if someone wanted something done within the area of their property because it will screw up or be it fixing when they have a beef because they are because of the TIF and maybe not using it for something they made a request for.
They can certainly, you know, make the request. And again, it will make cool prioritization of how those funds will be used as a later conversation. And I'll say businesses, uh you know, aren't prevented and they certainly uh don't shy away from making those requests even when they don't have a TIF in place, so.
And what would what would be the, like, if we did nothing? What would stop us from collecting the money and using it for that or is it just, you know, for infrastructure?
What do you mean?
Without the TIF, we'd be, we'd just be collecting.
So it would be, we'd be getting a much smaller amount of money without the TIF.
Uh huh.
It's so typically about seven, so out of the normal tax bill, about seventy percent goes to the schools.
Right.
About ten percent normally goes to the city. So we're adding that extra additional twenty percent that would also come to the city now.
So there's no reason, like thirty years is the maximum you could do.
Correct.
And there's no reason to do it for a less period.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I read through this and it's not an easy read.
And that is the scale downward.
Yeah, sure. But I appreciate the explanation. Any other questions?
Jason Dodson is available next meeting. If there are further questions that people come up with, you know, during the two weeks and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you.
So next we have legislative review. The first is uh is touched on by Ryan Oreo, uh this resolution authorizing there uh with A and J Cement Contractors. And this is for the driveway, apron, sidewalk and pathways. So Mr. I Oreo, um this is um part of the exterior repair program.
Right, so there was five hundred thousand designated just for basically concrete work or asphalt, um but here is concrete.
So we don't really, I I have not heard what the parameters of this program are as far as eligibility go or how it's gonna be administered. Um does that come later as part of uh other legislation? Maybe I should be asked in the law department.
Yeah, I I was under the impression that we weren't gonna send that for legislation, but we were gonna share program deadlines with council. Um so those need to be sorted out, but but in the universe of what could be eligible, it'd be up to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Um and then we'd have to decide on a dollar bond to max out so we could affect the most amount of people while still, you know, helping individuals.
Qualified census tract, is that gonna be a factor? Cause it's an ARPA factor.
Right.
I don't know if it's a program factor.
They have to clarify.
It's different when you're talking about uh things that fall under the residential rehabilitation section of ARPA because you're not talking about just the eligibility of an individual, you're talking about the eligibility of the property and the individual. And so what the hundred and twenty percent AMI is what we're looking at for the eligibility of the individual. And then the eligibility of the property itself can vary depending on which program standards we use.
And remind me, is this for homeowners only?
Yes. Believe so, yes.
And what about um senior citizens? If they AMI, it's like that would fall in.
Okay.
And part of the way we envision this, so when you use CDBG funds to rehabilitate a home or do a violation repair, the majority of the funds then have to be spent on the actual house. So unfortunately, more fortunately, equal rights, when it comes to things like garages or concrete, well, for including highs to garages, a lot of them are separate and not actually on the house.
Yeah.
So HUD doesn't consider that a housing rehab project. But the majority of funds have to go towards the house. So these ARPA funds could supplement those HUD funds so that we're not spending more than fifty percent on the concrete or garage or the non-housing related to.
And and I do see it says in the first uh whereas clause, pre-qualified owner occupied. Any questions?
Is this a salary, is there a side wage salary? Will they be?
That's an interesting question.
Generally, no prevailing wage requirements for housing.
I'm sorry, say it again.
There's generally no prevailing wage requirements for housing unless you're doing a year or more at a time.
No, 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 I mean for someone to qualify for this, is there a salary?
Yeah, there's an income level max. Um we have, I don't know if on our website yet, though. Let me look it up.
So is what the normal is nothing above that? It's just what the normal?
It's a little higher than what we normally do. So HUD is usually eighty percent or lower.
Uh huh.
And this is one twenty or lower, so it includes middle income.
Okay.
We would likely prioritize or maybe give action center of lower income groups. But that hasn't been sorted out yet.
So there were two contractors and I guess we're just splitting it between the two. Is that correct? So the second, legislation two thirteen, twenty twenty four, uh is for Romanin Concrete Inc.
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gail.
Thank you. On the first whereas, it says that these contractors are going to be working to replace concrete sidewalks. Does that alleviate somebody that's got an asphalt sidewalk or excuse me driveway? Does that eliminate someone who's currently got an asphalt driveway?
These particular funds, but there are other funds available for asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
Um is there a reason why we're going with two contractors instead of one? And the reason that I ask is because I just sensed that if we were to buy more, we might get like a bulk discount. If we were to go with one for five hundred thousand as opposed to two for two hundred fifty, is there a reason?
It's not so much the bulk. It's more about the concentration of projects that gets us the price cut, I think, on these projects. One of them was much cheaper on um sidewalks, pathways, and one of them was much cheaper on garages and apron. Okay, that's what we split it.
Any concern about the capacity for them to do the, you know, the amount of work? I guess we don't really know yet.
Right, and there is two hundred thousand dollars of revenue, I believe, that is for program delivery, so I was.
So uh uh you know, two thirteen is is for the.
Mr. President.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Question with you, good chance.
No, go.
Is is there any way that we can um use these contracts um to benefit property owners that may not qualify? So for example, if the house next door exceeds the income requirements and they're dealing a sidewalk replacement next door, is there a way that we're able to to be able to offer another homeowner a discount price? Um if I'm making any sense.
Yeah, like sort of like a.
Economy scale question.
Right, yeah.
Um not with these funds, but I'm sure there's a way.
Yeah, not with the funds.
Sure, there's a way they could work something out with the contractor.
Cause I I'd like to see that explored because obviously on my block, they came through and it was cheaper if a bunch of folks got together and had the sidewalk replacement done together as opposed to individually.
Right, yeah. So um we can talk about the process and if the neighbors maybe they would qualify, maybe they won't, but if they don't, maybe they can negotiate something with the contractor, a cheaper price.
If you're talking about sort of a more wholesale program for standardizing and sort of creating a citywide um program of like sidewalk replacement, for instance, or something like that. Um I know that that there was a lot of discussion about that and and different models for that. I I I think um the the Public Works Director and I both have talked a lot about it. Um and uh we don't think that it's necessarily a a bad idea to for the city to take a a larger role or a lead role in uh sort of the maintenance and repair of those things. But only in the event that we are responding to a sustainable, ongoing funding source for that. Um and that's why, you know, we were, we we didn't want to necessarily push in this direction, but the the most reasonable, at least from from our perspective, way to address that would be to think about what an assessment might look like, what an assessment might raise in order to have it make financial sense for the city to remove what has been a sort of a traditional and 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 not just in Cleveland Heights way of of managing the sidewalk that that is abuts the frontage of each property. And that that would be a longer conversation about what that would look like and how that funding would be uh constructed year over year. And what what it would bring in and what it would allow us to to fund for that year. Okay, any other questions? Nobody puts their hand up until.
I'll just, I I found the counsel in Russell. So a two-person household, the one twenty percent limit would be ninety three thousand three hundred currently.
Ninety three?
Four-person household, a hundred and sixteen thousand, six fifty.
Thank you.
So two thirteen again is Romanin doing, you know, basically the same work. Um resolution two fourteen is purchasing two Chevy bolts for the Planning and Development Department? Yes.
Just a quick.
Two used Chevy bolts.
Yeah. Um will we be purchasing a third vehicle pretty soon? This is mentioned in the in the memo, three vehicles.
I think it might be that the, because we're trying to source these things, it might be from separate locations that we're sourcing them.
Okay.
Um so that would have to be a different um piece of legislation and we'll bring that to council as quickly as we can if that's necessary for the. Um but that but that is the idea, is that we want to make sure that all the people that we have um out there have sufficient transportation to actually go out and get the job done. And I think these in particular may be specific to the expansion of our um building and permitting staff as well. So that, you know, uh as we bring people on and, you know, bring more and more of this in the house, we need to.
Absolutely agree. Thank you.
Other questions? Uh two fifteen is uh resolution authorizing the mayor to enter agreement with GPD for some existing sanitary sewer along Lamberton Road from Scarborough to Fairmount. Questions about that?
Yes, um when it talks about the bidding process that when it discusses, when down below it says if yes why, talks about the loan forgiveness application, do you have a timeline when that, you'll know if that's been accepted or not?
Sorry, where where are you looking at the if yes why?
The memo.
Cover sheet.
The memo sheet, Emma.
The emergency. Oh, okay. Um alright, so sorry, I I needed to see where you were looking first.
It's okay.
What was the question you got?
I wanted to know if you will know fairly soon or when if the loan forgiveness application has been accepted.
That I don't know the answer for. Um I can check in with Director Klinkstale and let you know. She would she would have a better idea than me.
Cause it looks to me like the GPD group, if you look at their schedule, the completion of survey and base making, they are hoping to have that done by December thirty first. So I was just wondering if the funding sources are going to overlap or.
Okay, I'll I'll get that answer for you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to two sixteen, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter agreement with Wade Trim. And this is for uh resident observation services relating to the Hampshire SSO control project. And more ARPA infrastructure. I have no questions, any others? Uh two seventeen, also Wade Trim contract uh for Yellowstone. I'm seeing them, uh now we're onto this budget increase. This is uh two eighteen, to increase the twenty twenty four budget ordinance by three hundred twenty eight thousand, four hundred twenty two dollars. And then there's a memo with an explanation of three funds. One increased two hundred thousand dollars, the general fund, ARPA led clearance tested, testing rebates from two twenty six, LedSafe County Fund, three hundred thousand dollars. And the local uh two forty, uh Fund two forty one, local fiscal fiscal recovery fund, one hundred seventy one thousand, five hundred seventy eight dollars. Need a breakdown of that. Yes.
And I just want to make sure that the payments to the LedSafe testing contractors with this transfer, that money will be in an account where they can get their checks.
That's what this is for.
Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Either way. All right. Any other questions?
I do, I do have one.
Yeah, please.
Um I would, can you explain, George Schuster, the entry? As it breaks down, it's account, fund, account two forty one, twenty one oh eight, non-government, OTPS. Then there's a negative there and the detail said that the notes were breaker and Greg Grayson ADA improvements in twenty twenty four budget placeholder.
So the twenty twenty four budget, we budgeted fifteen million dollars in this general, non-governmental operating account. Well, we didn't know what the ARPA funds would be used for at the time. So we just put it all in there and then once we knew where the the money would be spent, we would move it out of here. So it's only ten million now because during the year I was moving money back and forth.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Um resolution two twenty.
Nope, we're gonna go to two nineteen, we're actually putting it. And I have an amended version.
Oh, alright.
And I'm sorry, I wrote on the amended version because the number was wrong when we cut it off, so.
Is this?
It's, yes, yep, it's the exhibit and then.
All right, uh so two nineteen is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Frank Melvack and Sons, furnished labor, material and equipment to perform the sandblasting, painting and related services to repair concrete pool. So this is a a change in what's in the packet, right?
Yeah, the actual legislation was not in the packet to begin with.
Okay.
Um the uh.
But it's not on the agenda, so I thought it.
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
It's a different title though, so will be as amended. Bill, do we need to do an amendment in in uh chambers for this one?
Um you can just adopt it as amended.
As amended, okay, great.
So the cost of this is a hundred and ninety seven thousand, eight hundred sixty one dollars. And is, do we need to adopt this tonight?
I believe so, but I'm not positive of this.
We're. We didn't get that.
We're asking that it is adopted tonight because if there's weather and time that permits, uh the company can still come out and do the work this year compared to pushing the limits and doing it early next year and hoping that we hold down time
Got it.
uh for the swim season next year. So they they feel confident that there still is time to do the work this year, that's why it's time set.
Um, House Pash.
Is this for the major pool as well as the children's pool?
Yeah.
Yeah. And there is some um concrete work that has been done for the concrete over many years, concrete repairs have splashed onto the gutter systems. And it is annoying and dangerous when someone sits in those areas because the gutter system is part of the pool. Is the sandblasting able to take off those pieces of splattered concrete? I mean, so imagine you're sitting on the deck, you're sitting on the side of the pool and you're sitting on splattered concrete that's sticking to stainless steel and it tears bathing suits, it tears skin. and it tears bathing suits, it tears skin. To be very careful in some of these areas of work that, that kids are coming in going, there's always torn flush because of that. Is there any way that this work would remedy that particular issue?
Cause I, I don't know that we've been that specific in, but that's something that we can talk with the contractor about making happen and including.
Yeah, we can definitely have some conversation with the contractor and address those specifications. Cause it certainly seemed to me a huge point that sandblaster, some of those areas are gonna solve a problem and it's gonna be.
Just immediate increase in people's quality of life.
Yes. Save more years on that pool. And the lane lines are gonna be straight.
So what did you say?
The lane lines will be straight. Just. For just pool, you got great people running it. This is a beautiful patient effort that really great to see, to say.
Some people swim crooked, so.
Do you want me to motion to add this to the agenda?
It, it doesn't need to be, but it's already on there.
Mr. President.
Right.
Councilor.
Um, funding for this much-needed program is coming from, I'm missing it on here. Funding?
So there's, there's, um, there was three hundred thousand dollars set aside for, for new boilers for the system. After talking to Tom Pedanz, our assistant director, uh, we can probably still get away with another year or two of those boilers. I mean, they're on their last, very, very last leg, but we do, uh, we do still have some more life as we go into what the, what the next phase of what Cumberland Pool is gonna look like. Uh, so we felt, you know, holding off on those boilers because we can still get some life out of them. Re-appropriating some of those dollars to, uh, something that, that, that'll help us immediately.
With all due respect, I'm wondering if we can put something aside in the budget to prepare for those boilers going down?
Well, I think part of, part of the reason why we haven't proposed that is that we do still expect to move forward with some, not next year, uh, we're gonna maintain the pool as it is for the twenty-five swim season. But we, we didn't want to necessarily put money aside for boilers when we might be undergoing a larger, um, you know, Cumberland sort of rebuild, um, which would include a different heating system, um, and, and modernization in a variety of ways. Without, you know, keeping the lap swimmers from swimming laps. I know people get concerned, uh, when we mention rebuild, but the idea is that eventually, and, and hopefully in the relative near future, we'll be, uh, engaged in a larger project than just the boiler. And so we wanted to fold all of that in as a possibility.
Thank you.
An editorializer for just a quick moment, but it's related. I mean, I think when you ask about budgeting, we've had a lot of turnover in that department and I think what you really need is a good operating manual on when you start the season, when you get things going, what preventative maintenance is done over the winter. And I think you'd find, I think those boilers would last quite a long time without the need for replacement. If, if people just put it on their maintenance schedule.
Well, I'll tell you, thank you. And, and I, I've, I've got a great deal of confidence in our, our new director to help steer that ship the right way.
Great, thank you. Mr. President, would it be possible to go back to, um, two eighteen?
Um, i- i- are we done with this topic? Okay, back to two eighteen.
Yeah, Director Schu- Schuster, I'm sorry. Um, for clarification, if my understanding correctly, it may be that I'm not, but, but that I'd ask. So am I understanding this to mean that we would like two hundred thousand for lead clearance testing? That we are unable to pay for directly using ARPA funds? Plus three hundred thousand for a lead save Cuyahoga fund? In that that's going to be partially offset by a hundred seventy thousand of ARPA funds?
So the three hundred thousand is not anything to do with the ARPA.
Okay.
The two hundred, yes, that's part of the revenue replacement. And we'll be in three point eight million dollars out of the general fund salaries and putting it into the two forty-one. And that money will be in the general fund, the three point eight, two hundred of that is the, the one, yes.
And it's partially offset by the one seventy-one, hundred seventy-one thousand?
The negative.
Yes. And so we would be looking for three hundred twenty-eight thousand from unencumbered funds? Is that where it's coming from? The three hundred twenty-eight thousand?
The three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Yes. Three hundred thousand is the T twenty-six. If I'm not mistaken, that's gonna get reimbursed by Cuyahoga, right? So as of right now, it is part of the fund balance until we get the money back.
Okay, so it would.
Associated with those three properties.
Okay. So if we get that reimbursement, then it would just be an additional twenty-eight thousand from unencumbered funds? Is it okay? Okay, thank you.
Great. Uh, now we're on to two twenty, thank you. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter partnership with Friends of Mendelson. This is about Park Synagogue and EPA. Um, you have Josh here and, and associates?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, Mr. President, I might, so the, the legislation would specifically authorize the city to enter into this partnership agreement with Friends of Mendelson for purposes of pursuing this EPA Community Change Grant. So that part is easy and a lot of department can handle that and we've worked out that agreement. But the overall background for the grant and the program for which grant funds would be used, I think is, um, it's good that we have them here to explain that.
Let's come up here. Good evening, council members. My name is Ken Callenschuck. Um, I'm a project management consultant. We're being a grant writing team on behalf of Friends of Mendelson um, in partnership with the city of Cleveland Heights with your support. The Inflation Reduction Act has a lot of goodies for improving climate resilience and sustainability projects across the country. But it's taken a few years for a lot of these programs to get rolled out and fully written by the federal government. Um, one of the great programs that came out was a two billion dollar source of funding for community change grants that are meant to improve climate resilience of communities, reduce pollution and improve community, um, education and engagement around climate change in ways that people can um, adapt their daily lives to the future with climate change that we're living in. What we are pursuing here is a joint application for up to twenty million dollars to bring dollars here to Cleveland Heights. Both for your Climate Action Plan, the draft of which was published and released last week by the city, as well as bring funds to the Friends of Mendelson, former Park Synagogue campus to improve the greenery of the site, um, include geothermal and solar on-site and be able to use the facility as a cooling center and climate resilience hub for Cleveland Heights. Um, I can spend dozens of minutes talking about the requirements of the grant and what we're gonna spend the dollars for. A lot of that will be negotiated throughout the process. What we're mainly applying for is approximately ten to twelve million for improvements to energy efficiency, um, solar and geothermal, and then the tree canopy on the park site. And additional ten plus million towards, um, Cleveland Heights residents being able to plant trees on their properties to provide solar and home repairs for seventy-five to a hundred homes. Um, and then a few million dollars for engagement overhead at the city and education. Um, a few more details, the grant funds, if awarded, will have to be spent within three years. Um, the application is very competitive, so, you know, we kind of came up with this concept a few weeks ago. And the deadline is this Thursday to submit. So we've been deep into application writing, working with the Great City team you have here to put together a framework of how these grant funds could be used in partnership with local organizations in your community. And over the next two days, uh, with your support and approval of the partnership agreement which we're requesting, we hope to submit this application and hopefully find out good news in the next six months.
So I need a little bit more explanation on this partnership. So you're not, your, your scope for this grant would be the items that you listed for Park Synagogue plus citywide projects that our staff would work on to determine where those monies would go? Is that right?
It, it's, it's pretty narrowly defined within the federal government regulations of what it could be spent on. There's a certain set of projects, but we took the draft plan that came out last week and identified various sorts, various projects that were in there that could be eligible for this funding and then are working it into our grant application right now.
So this is.
Like the tree plantings, like solar, um, like certain bus stops along Main Field and near this climate resilience hub. Um, we're gonna try to pay for a battery at the resilience hub. And one of the great things about the grant is we can, we're, we're planning on forming an advisory committee with the, the city, the Sustainability Committee, Friends of Mendelson, to come up with priorities for certain buckets of funding that will not be defined.
So I, I'm struggling a little bit, so forgive me.
It's fine.
I, I'm really trying to understand how this partnership falls into place because you're talking about a lot of money here. And I, I see the Park Synagogue will benefit from it greatly, which is great. Above and beyond that, um, this task force or whatever committee you're talking about would work, the different entities would work together to determine where the money that's not going to Park Synagogue will go. So the city staff would be represented on that stakeholder table?
The city staff and the Sustainability Committee would be representative at the table. And if I may, Councilwoman, I'll take a step back. The, the government set this up so that only nonprofits can take advantage of the program and apply for it in partnership with a statutory partner who could be a sub awardee. Um, but isn't necessarily the one liable for all the federal requirements of the grant.
Alright.
So there's, there's certain projects that will be outside the park campus, like some of the solar install, like some of the tree plantings on private property, which will have to flow, if, if we're lucky enough to win the award, will have to flow through Friends of Mendelson to a community nonprofit to do the work with approval and agreement of the city. Um, it's a little convoluted how it's set up, but this is the best way to, to move forward. And we, we require is a partnership like the city, city front end of this partnership.
When will they announce, when will they announce who's won it, who won the money?
If, if we're lucky, this spring in twenty-five.
Thank you, I'm, thank you.
So will the private homes around the synagogue be able to use those funds for solar panels?
It, yes. So part, part of our targeted buckets of money is approximately one to two million dollars for home solar install. Um, the, the number listed in the agreement is a hundred homes, it may be closer to eighty. Because we're trying to also for some of these homes, um, provide repair resources because not many roofs. And these priorities, sorry, I need to take a step back. There's, according to this program, there's six census tracts in Cleveland Heights which are highly disadvantaged for climate change and poverty. And they want the funds to flow into these census tracts. So for the solar and for the tree plantings, this grant, the grant fund will be prioritized for households in that area. The, um, how, who gets chosen will be determined in conjunction with this advisory committee that will be formed. Um, but approximately eighty homes will be able to apply for funding for the solar, for batteries, for roof repairs to make sure that their homes can sustain the solar over time.
So will those homes have to be around the synagogue?
No.
Or anywhere in the census tract?
It probably has to be in the six census tracts that are the most impoverished and disadvantaged.
And you probably somewhere located near the, okay.
Correct, but the.
I was just gonna say, one of them is probably, you know, the, the soda beachwood, Altima.
Yeah, two, two, two of the census tracts that are most eligible for this program are the one where the Park Synagogue site is located, the one directly south of it, and then four census tracts north of Main Field. But we're defining the project areas locally.
Cause there's a lot of rental property in that area that may be eligible.
I would think so, but that's something that would be discussed and determined to your, your priorities in that engagement process.
Yeah.
This comes up.
Okay, so it seems like this is a great opportunity. It's, it sounds like you're trying to fast-track it. I respect that. I think if it was perfect world, this is the kind of thing that really should be going to a council committee, looking at it, getting on board, feeling comfortable with it. Um, I mean, I, I wanna see this work, but I kinda really wish it sort of fit within our framework of making a decision, which is getting in a council committee, and a council committee can review it. If we're gonna okay this tonight, I need to ask our law department, I mean, what's the risk for us to, to move forward with this? I mean, I mean, it's, sounds like a great idea, but, and, and I wanna vote yes for it, but I, I don't wanna vote yes for it unless we have risk.
So one of the things that people have gotten tired of hearing me say is how many fast-track things we're keeping, um, deliberate here. Oftentimes great opportunities, but you know, we need to move quickly. And so in this case, um, uh, Ken and the, the park folks were all very cooperative in making some changes that allowed the agreement to, uh, function better from the city's perspective. And one of the most important ones from my perspective was ensuring that we had the ability to, uh, terminate our involvement in this, um, agreement and this partnership with some provisions for finding a replacement partner and things like that to continue on with the work if, uh, we determine to do so. And one of the reasons that that's important is there hasn't been a lot of time to work through all of the arcane details that may come up. And so the ability to limit our involvement if the city determines at some point in the future that that's, you know, in the city's best interest was important. And we got that language worked out.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Cause that's a fair question. I mean, we, we know that an ask is coming, um, you know, of the city. Maybe I'm assuming it, but it seems like an ask is coming. And you know, it's, there is kinda like that, well, we already did the EPA thing, we already did these other grants, you know, so we should, you know, kinda like, why wouldn't we go ahead and do, you know, the whole thing? But yet, you know, we don't know what the ask is, you know, that's for. So, you know, as far as leading the whole picture, I, I get the, you know, the trepidation there.
Mr. President, I don't know, Mr. Roosevelt, did you have, you seemed like you might have some insight to provide or input if you wanted to, I just wanted to.
Well, I mean, it was just to say, we're sort of pursuing everything all at once. We found out about this grant a few weeks ago. We were supposed to be at the Sustainability Office, waiting for the Climate Action Plans to see what recommendations they have that we could incorporate. The, the way I look at this is like, hopefully these are some easy dollars that can be used to implement parts of the Climate Action Plan right away. That's the goal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the only, we would love a slower process, but it's really, it's two, it's two in two days, unfortunately. I wish we, I wish we knew about it for longer than, uh, than we had, we did, but we've been hustling at it, uh, ever since. And we're sort of pursuing everything. Obviously, I think we've had conversations with city staff. If, if something, if a grant like this comes through, obviously that would change the nature of our request. Uh, whatever we work out, we could document. If this grant is awarded, Cleveland Heights' participation goes from X to Y. So.
Got it.
Can we get that on camera?
It's like, it's on air, you know, but it seems, you know, ob- obviously it would be a great help to the project as well as to the community.
Notice it's X and Y and not any amount. Alright, um.
Not so much for him. I just want clarity about the conversation we just had and going, what we're looking like. Because in, in the past, we, we approved a million dollars, we've had these conversations. I, just, just for the council as a whole, I wanna make it clear that this, what, what's happening here is typical in the grant world. You're gonna see things pop up towards the end of the year. So I hope the expectation is that we'll continue to flesh these, these ideas out and not just try to send them to the committee because of how we're looking at things. I just wanna make sure, um, that we, we've got an, an understanding about that, cause I'm just, it sounds like there's a little concern because of the timing. But this happens quite often and in terms of the grant world and anything that we can bring and help this process is absolutely going to be a positive thing. So I just, just wanted to put that out there just in case, because going forward, you're gonna see a lot of opportunities going in two thousand twenty-five in terms of grants and opportunities. Wanna flesh those out, at the same time, always be cognizant of that, of that timeframe when these things come up. I do know the last time you came before, you, you made it very clear that you guys were going after everything in terms of that conversation. So I appreciate that.
Mr.
Yes.
I, I've just sort of, um, addressing both of those, those statements, I, I think that it's, um, it's, it's a situation, I think, from the administration standpoint, we wanna do everything in our power to do exactly, uh, achieve regular order to the degree that we can when it comes to providing, you know, sufficient time for people to get comfortable. When it comes to, um, the, the, the grant application process, sometimes there's more risk than others. Um, you know, whether or not there's a, a match required or some ongoing potential, uh, viability or responsibility on the part of the city to continue to fund something after we've received grant dollars to, to do that. We're also, I think, much more aggressive than we have been in sort of a, uh. a more unified way here at the city in going after as much outside money as we possibly can. Um, and and so jumping on this chance to apply, um, with Friends of Mendelson is is, I think, it's a part of that strategy, trying to, you know, get as much outside dollars and participate as much as we can in that. But I think the councilman's point is is well taken. We do want to provide as much time as possible for people to get on board and and understand the the program. Um, but at the same time, the councilman's point is also well taken, that sometimes these come, these come up quickly. And, um, we we have to be nimble, but we also recognize and we don't want you to think that we take for granted any of your votes on these things, we are putting them before you. Um, and, you know, obviously, there are ramifications for, you know, saying no to this. It means that it becomes not a possibility for us, but I also recognize that this is a request, not a demand. Um, and and I hope that we've created a situation where people can feel comfortable that we are not putting ourselves in a dangerous position. Um, certainly not relative to the benefit that we would be getting from the dollars if we did, uh, you know, win the grant uh, as as a partnership. But I do, I do want to let let council know that we, I I personally, and we take both of those points very seriously. Um, and and so sometimes we may have to say, please, council, let's, can we jump on this chance? And then and then our default and our goal is always to provide for that committee discussion as well.
Alright, thank you. Any other?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, next is the two twenty one. This is, uh, Mayor entering into an agreement, uh, for audio visual and lighting services equipment for Kane Park. Um, so sound lighting, video, likes. Um, the total is seven ninety six, seven ninety six thousand, two hundred and thirty five dollars and forty seven cents. This is, um, a money. I mean, I'll just start this conversation off with saying that I know we initially put four hundred thousand dollars uh, aside for this equipment, and now it's like, well, close to twice as much. Um, and I did notice that the sound equipment alone was more than the four hundred thousand that was set aside for this initial. Completely understand the reason, because I I was the one that brought it up, that we were renting equipment and it's, and I was told by the then Parks and Rec director that we could recover all the money we we use for rentals in two and a half years, so that, that, I mean, I didn't need to hear any more than that. I'm just one councilperson saying that. But this is quite a bit more than we initially allocated, so if anyone wants to speak to why that is.
I think the the original allocation was done with a less robust estimating process than what, uh, Kane Park staff did, you know, once we sort of got into it. Um, and I think they did a a bunch of research into, uh, what the acts would need, how it would affect our rentals. Um, we even had some conversation, I don't know if anybody saw this, but, um, we recently were announced as the commencement location for Cleveland Institute of Art. Um, so they'll be having their ceremony at Kane Park next year. And part of that discussion also included, um, some of this, because, you know, the part of choosing Kane Park as that, as that venue included a discussion about what they would need for their commencement. And it matched a whole lot of the stuff that we were looking at already. Um, and and so basically, just the the numbers are because we want to position Kane Park as uh, as well as possible to be a choice venue. Um, we we want artists to want to come here, to this city, to to, you know, make people happy. Um, and and we and we think, you know, after getting into sort of the the best way that we could purchase things that will basically last for like twenty years of, you know, we might otherwise be renting. Um, this is, this is the way that, um, the the Kane Park team went. And and I'll tell you, I think, um, one of one of the the staff members over there has a great deal of, uh, experience and expertise i- i- specifically in the sound, um, equipment over there. And so I think that that informed a lot about what would work best in that venue for the acts that we're trying to attract. Um, and what it would mean to us not having to rent, um, and and being a place where, you know, bands wanna play.
Well, I mean, there's just, there's just acts that that can't come here based on the technology that they use and the requirements they have. They're they're, they're in the contracts, they don't, they're not gonna change that, and I I totally give that part of it. So I take it we just move.
Yeah, and 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 a lot of this, like the 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 trust, for instance, the, you know, we're talking about not just improving the technology that we have there for the shows, but improving the experience of staffing the shows as well. So, um, just to be able to, uh, you know, pull that trust down. And, you know, instead of having to get on lifts and and rent lifts potentially to to change the lighting schemes for each show, those sorts of things, it'll streamline time wise, the 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 crews will love it when they come through. Um, and and those sorts of things, so we're 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 trying to make this a more professional venue. Um, especially, I mean, you know, we've got a bunch of really old equipment over there too, so.
Three seventy six is coming out of Arpa one.
Yes, and it was, you know, some shifted over from like, you know, I mean, we put, we basically had a lot of money shifted over to Kane Park in particular, who had their hand up, but.
So my question was along those lines, so it's great to see that it's all coming from Arpa, so there's nothing from uncovered funds that we need to touch. Um, but I know that we've had some conversations about moving some of that Arpa money. Is there something, since this is four hundred thousand dollars more than what was originally allocated, is there something now that's not being funded? Or was there money that was not allocated that we freed up that is now going to this?
I think the.
And I'm sorry if it was already explained.
No, no, I I don't think it was, I think the original allocations were more vague and weren't specific to projects. And and that's sort of where some of, you know, as we started estimating those, and quotes for certain things, we realized how we would have to refine some of the direction of that of that money. Um, so I don't know necessarily that there's anything in particular that was defunded as a result of of increasing the funding here. Um, it, but I'm I'm open to being corrected on that, I don't think that it was a sort of a a specific trade off.
It was a part of a cluster of movements, um, it was, I know it was covered in the last time of presentation that, uh, we made to the committee of the whole. Um, and again, it was along with the, uh, the police boxes, the shipping containers. It was part of that reorientation
Okay.
that these funds were made available.
Right, but I mean, this is now, there's a page that itemizes this, this is what we didn't see before.
Hmm.
Right, you know, that's this.
Right, we didn't, we didn't have those numbers yet when we were.
And I, you know, again, seeing that the sound system alone is five hundred and thirty six thousand, you know, that's, that was the big change. You know, the other stuff, I mean, the screens, and I totally get, I mean, this is, if you wanna be big time, this is, this is it. I mean, this is the way you do it.
And this may also allow for some sponsorship activity that we would not previously have been able to a pre and post show advertisements on screens, you know, the screens are, uh, movable, they can be, uh, hoisted on trusses as well. They can be combined to, you know, those sorts of things.
The dressing rooms, the roof, this equipment, I mean, we're all in on.
We're all in, and and I'll I'll tell you, I think, part of the reason why it's so difficult is that Kane Park is and should be a treasure of this community, just period, because it's so rare. Um, it could be, I mean, it is something special, period, but it could be something really special. Um, but I think that the city has for decades, um, you know, not invested as much as we should have in something, you know, that can bring a lot more benefit to the community. And and so now we're sort of pushing a lot that way because we've neglected it for so long.
Hmm.
Director Schuster, I'm expecting to see that the transfer that we're doing includes this money for these particular items, right?
Do we anticipate any other projects maybe coming over this amount of money for other projects that we're doing?
Other Arpa projects, are you talking about?
I'm sorry, uh, other projects that we.
That may be coming down the line that may go over quite a bit.
Over our initial sort of estimate, estimate of the the cost.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm I'm not, I certainly don't have a granular, um, grasp on that, but I think, uh, the Coventry garage elevator repair is is now looking like it may be a little bit more expensive than initially anticipated. I'm not sure if there are others in that.
Maybe a few, but some are going under budget too.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
For example, Suri Garage has decided to go under budget, should be enough for the, uh,
The Coventry.
increase in the Coventry garage.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Okay, we better move on, we got actually a lot of stuff and not a lot of time. Um, two twenty two is the restroom renovation project at Kane Park. Um, any questions about that? We did a kinda touch on that a little earlier. Uh, two twenty three.
Don't, not add, we're adding one, like first reading.
Okay.
Two twenty seven, I passed it out to you guys.
Well, that number comes after two twenty ten.
I know. It's out of order.
Okay.
Which one you want?
Two twenty seven, I guess. Um, so this resolution authorizes an amendment to the contract with Tanya Richardson for personal training services and declaring the necessity. This is personal training services at the community center, yeah. And I know this had been discussed at one time, go ahead.
No, that's, I I I'd like some details on this. And could we get a copy of her original contract? I'll let you go and then I'll have some follow ups, I think.
Okay, so the the first thing to understand is how we, um,
Sorry.
address personal trainers at the community center generally. Um, the way that this works is it is a shared contract, um, in that, it's sort of a revenue sharing contract. In that we are providing space, we've got people who are contractors with the city. The funds for the actual service are paid to the city. We take our cut and then pay the personal trainers to, that that actually provided the service. Um, and and so basically what it amounts to is that we're never out of any money. Because we get paid first and we, you know, give the the personal trainers their cut under this contract, and I don't remember the percentages.
You remember I had their twenty.
Different for different positions, uh,
Eighty two.
The the majority of our contracts are seventy thirty split.
Okay.
Her being a head trainer, hers is a little bit different, at an eighty five fifteen split.
And so, and she, her her responsibilities include managing some of the other trainers as well and coordinating that work too. Um, but, so in this, in this circumstance, we are in a way a pass through, um, but, you know, we we provide this service at our facilities. The trainers are using our facilities to provide this training, um, and so we're receiving that income from that personal trainer activity. In this case, um, the amount of personal training activity has gone above the, you know, the the norm. And actually, I think we're looking at a potential way to avoid doing this in the future by maybe changing how we contract for this particular kind of contract, a shared revenue kind of contract, where, you know, either we can enter into a contract that is sort of with a larger limit or without a limit or something like that, because the split will remain the same. Um, and so we don't have to then come back to council for something that is just an expansion of the exact same contract. It's just that there's been more personal training going on.
And to that point, Mayor, the hundred and forty, the new amended hundred and forty thousand dollar not to exceed, um, number, if if this is authorized by council, is for a four year period.
Yeah, so we're, yeah.
You said a four year?
To- total four, not four, not annually.
Is it four?
Total four.
I think it was two, I thought it was two.
To talk.
We've we've already, it was, it started in twenty twenty two.
Oh, right.
Her contract expired this year, and we wanna extend it for additional two years.
Go ahead, Craig.
But it's a hundred and forty over two years.
Over the, over.
Over the full, over the total.
Twenty five and twenty six, so not to exceed basically seventy thousand dollars per year for the next two years is is the way that we built it.
It's expired.
Current currently, right now, her contract, and it's a good problem to have. It expires. And what what I mean by that is that right now, her her contract says that she gets this eighty five fifteen split with a not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars. Um, but the problem is, is that she's brought in so many clients exceeded our 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 expectations. She's gone above the fifty thousand dollar mark, so that's why we have to come to you guys, uh, for further approval, so so we can exceed that fifty thousand dollar mark. And in addition, we're planning for the future, so instead of fifty thousand, we'll afford for twenty five and twenty six, we're actually trying to increase that to seventy thousand for twenty five and seventy thousand for twenty six. That's where the hundred and forty thousand mark comes in, to try to be proactive, so we don't have to worry about her, uh, you know, potentially not getting paid.
Just two things, just so you know, this is something typical, uh, prior to coming to Key, I oversaw the YMCA's youth department there. Part of what she did was this work there and other organizations, and this is typical contract with a lot of nonprofits who do community work and things, and they bring in, uh, trainers as well. Uh, but I but I heard a question, someone asking, you know, if it expired, why didn't they? They need to expand this because the volume, um, supersedes where they were with the original contract with her, that's why. So they have to go back and revisit it to get the extra funds in in for that, but but I'm not surprised, she she's one of the top in Ohio, uh, to do this. And so she tends to bring her clients with her wherever she goes, and so this is a good win.
No, I just missed.
So just a couple of things, I understand you're new. Um, I I'd like to get it, um, some accounting of the personal training, how many participants we've had, and the revenue that's coming in, just to educate myself in a copy of the contract. And then this, um, causes me to take a look, that we have not, I think, looked at what we're charging for our recreation fees now in several years. Are we in the process of examining that to update what we're charging?
Yeah.
Yeah, we 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 definitely can, I mean, granted, I've only been here for three weeks, so just, uh, give me a little bit of slack here. Yeah, we definitely, there's, there's a lot of things that we definitely need to look at, and I'm sure that me and the mayor are open to looking at some of those those fees as well.
Yeah, and 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 I will say, like, uh, the the supervisors over, uh, in Parks and Rec have been looking at this and talking about this as well, so we're we're definitely primed to to work toward that.
And then just, uh, in our last salary ordinance, it references the personal trainer and the head of personal training services. Has somebody double checked to make sure that this contract is not gonna be in conflict with the salary ordinance?
Well, the, okay, the salary ordinance and then the ten ninety nine contracts are sort of separate. Um, and so this particular revenue sharing, uh, agreement is basically just protects us that we don't pay unless there's more money to pay. Um, it's just that this particular, um, not to exceed, you know, just wasn't high enough for the work that she was doing then. But they shouldn't know, they should not conflict because they're two separate processes.
So I would agree with, uh, the councilperson Cobb's request to just have some very ruminarily basic accounting. to just have some very ruminarily basic accounting and stuff I'm sure you guys have already gone through.
Yeah.
That needs to be shared with council, this needs to go to, I mean, I'm, you know, I don't want to hold this up, but this is another example where I think we need to follow a process where this goes through the committee that the committee's supposed to see it. They they should be asking these questions, they should be asking the questions also about, you know, what are our rates? And, you know, this is the value that, you know, council, you know, you know, provides the city, and I think that needs to be utilized. So another example, but, you know, I, you know, what you're asking for is very reasonable. I mean, it's 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 what we should be voting for. I just wish council was a little bit more involved in the process to get to this stage.
I know, we wanted, we wanted to have this on the last agenda. I think we we just didn't make the deadline because of the way that the issue came up. So the, but yeah, we wanted this, I think, the 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 larger conversation though, and maybe this is something that that councilman, you might be able to put together a discussion about about the sort of what we're charging for this, how we're marketing it. Some of that stuff is going to change in the in the upcoming months. And and so I think that it makes a lot of sense for us to get together and have those conversations about, you know, who's using the community center, the fitness center, the trainers, and how can we expand that to make it more attractive to more people in our community and to really maximize on the benefit that we're providing? I think that's a great idea. This this one in particular, and the reason why, again, if we're going to talk about sort of why we're fast tracking, obviously, end of year stuff is always fun that way. But in this case, it's really because we want to be able to pay this woman who has brought in so much business, and we can't right now.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
So the money's there, the money's been brought in already.
Mr. President, I can ask a question. Are you going to be having an executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So at that point, I want to have some discussion with the mayor and the director and make sure that we're all lined up in terms of these amounts. I think we may be off by fifteen thousand dollars for a variety of reasons, but we'll sort that out quickly.
Okay. That may be something that we can address in a later amendment as well.
That's true.
If necessary.
That's true. So um, two twenty three is improvements to real property. Oh, yeah, this is the, sorry, I flipped over this page accidentally. Okay, yeah, this is for the old tree veterinary, which we already talked about, and the TIF, the thirty year TIF. Two twenty four is, is this a consent?
We need two twenty six, that was added, which is the um. I start.
These are first readings?
Two twenty six is first reading, and two twenty three was as well, okay? And the two twenty seven first reading?
Could I see?
Two twenty seven is first reading.
Could I see two twenty six? I don't know. Oh, yeah, yeah. So this um. Heights are kind of redid their scope of work. So this is two twenty six. I have seen this before, but I don't know if everybody else does.
No.
And that's not for adoptions, and I.
Two twenty four is universal month for human rights. Yeah, and then two twenty five is transgender day remembrance. Recognizing November twenty. And that. This one's pretty hefty. Next on our agenda is um going into executive session.
Council, somebody.
Yes, I would just, we go into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second. All right, and a second? Um, Eddie, you can call the role?
Posh.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Maddox.
Hi.
Larson. Petrus.
Hi.
Uda.
Yes.
Cop.
Hi. All right, we're back from executive session. The only thing left on the agenda is other. I just wanted to um say that we have budget hearings tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. They all start at ten AM. We don't have a budget booked yet. So Mayor, where are we at?
Yeah, we're working through that. Now we expect to get you something tomorrow, and then we will be providing agenda to the initial budget book that we provide tomorrow as we go through. We don't expect, and we don't, we're not asking for council to make these determinations without having information and data and what our times are for the for the funds. But putting it together amongst many other priorities has been more time consuming. So we're sort of working through getting that final budget book information. So this is taking a little longer than you expected.
Yeah, so for me, this is going to be more of a presentation, I I want to speak for everybody else. And we can take that in, and I, you know, I sent you some general questions that, you know, we would, we would, not, not we, I would ask. Here's what I would ask of you and the directors. Since we're not going to be able to probably, some of us may not be to to ask specific questions on the fly without studying first. I think what's going to be important is that the directors make themselves available for the meetings we have in December.
Subsequent to.
Yeah, because I would assume that everybody's going to read at some point and have questions that they may not be prepared to ask Monday, or sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. If they're at these, you know, at the council meetings, we can just set aside time at those meetings. You know, in committee of the whole.
I think that is an absolutely appropriate way to handle this. I think that it also provides council and council members more opportunities as well. Sort of this initial, but then other opportunities subsequent to the initial budget hearings to continue having that conversation throughout the rest of the year. So I I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, and I appreciate you making them available.
Of course.
Yes.
You know, this puts me at an extreme disadvantage. You know, we discussed this in our one on one meetings, which I'm thankful that we have, but not being able to have something that I could look at and offer questions for in advance is just very, very difficult and just inappropriate, I think, to ask council. I mean, I don't even know what you guys are going to be meeting tomorrow if you can't even, you know, do your homework and 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 review, but, you know, I'm out of town, I'm down in Florida, I I I can't participate, and I'm sorry about that, but I I don't even understand the purpose of the meeting. And if we're going to be meeting in December, can we please hold some dates so we can put it in our calendar?
I can, I can address the first part, I think, before getting to the.
Please go ahead.
Calendering. I and I I did appreciate your, you you mentioned to me that you'd be out of town for for the meetings coming up. And that's why I think I I appreciate the council president's suggestion that we do these preliminary presentations on the budget, which of course will be, you know, filmed, streamed, so on and so forth, and and provide that information in conjunction with those presentations and then allow a subsequent opportunity that presumably you would be available for to have a further conversation, ask additional questions of the directors and the finance department and me before making any determinations about how you vote.
Couple of questions, so the info that we will get tomorrow, do you expect it will be sufficiently similar to what was like shared during each of the hearings last year, or?
It, I I think it will be similar.
Okay, so along the same.
Yeah, along the same lines. I think, you know, the the capacity that we have currently, I think, has presented a challenge in putting together some of it. But we're going to do our best to provide something similar in in terms of its range and importance to the conversation.
Do you think that it would be possible for us to get something by like nine thirty so that we have just a little bit of time to look at it in advance of the meeting?
I can't guarantee it.
Okay, okay. And then also, I I remember like last year, there was like, sort of like a dialogue with like the directors. So if it's the case that that dialogue like happens later, like clarifying questions and stuff like that comes later, I just want to make sure that, you know, there's going to be enough flexibility in the process that like if a bunch of council members say like, oh, we would like X, Y, or Z, that those changes can be made and that we are not in a position where we say, oh, well, we're already, you know, middle of December, we got to pass it today, we don't have time to go back. Like, I understand that it took a lot of time, more time than maybe folks were expecting to get the budget book together. But if we don't have time to ask those questions tomorrow, if we have to ask them in the future, I just want to make sure that we're able to, you know, make changes in the future.
Yes, so yes, to the to the initial question, sort of short answer. And obviously, the second answer is you guys don't vote until you're comfortable, for one. And you can make amendments, you know, ongoing as well, that's within the authority of the council. And then and then the the last piece is, I think it is important to have sort of the goal of end of year, we've got a budget for the beginning of next year. But we all know that's not the end of the story either. And and so I I think as we'll we'll discuss tomorrow, we're going to have an ongoing conversation about twenty twenty five budget. And we are going to obviously be able, as we hopefully are doing today, make amendments to that in twenty twenty five in order to make sure that what we're doing appropriately addresses the actual needs of the city. So I I don't, I don't want anybody to feel like, you know, it's the hard sell and you don't have any power, you can either vote yes or no. Clearly, council has the authority to amend the budget before passage and and then the ongoing authority to continue amending the budget. Councilman.
I I recognize some of the frustration at the table. But I wanted to wait to make sure we came out of executive session to say this. The the level of frustration that we have and the timing with the administration and and the mayor, I I get. I just wish this council had that same level of accountability for ourselves. Where are our guardrails around appointments, dates, expirations, expectations for when we do things? We tend to have these expectations for times and dates for the administration. There's no accountability for this council itself. So the frustration that I'm hearing at this table around budgets and preparing, I expect some, see some type of legislation, whether coming out of administrative services or someone else at this table that decided to revoke this man's right to make appointments to make sure that we do our appointments on time, because we still have boards and commissions we haven't filled. So this frustration that we're seeing is blowing me away because we don't have the same frustration for our own organization and the only way we develop. So I just want to make that clear. I still don't have any guardrails or any timeframes around anything that we do, but we still have this frustration around this budget. Secondly, we recognize that this administrative staff wasn't just working on the budget, they were also doing ARPA. We've been demanding multiple things, multiple times, over and over and over again, with the same staff members. So we'd just like to have some type of grace concerning that as well. I I I hear the administration saying that they have no problem making sure the directors come and meet with us. I just want to make sure that if we're, that whatever measure that we're measuring them by, we're also measuring ourselves by, because this frustration at this table of some kind is mind boggling to me considering we are not organized ourselves in any way, shape, or form, which is why we keep having our conversations about the schedule.
Yeah, I just want to say I completely disagree with that. I think this council has done an excellent job at staffing committees. Go ahead, Councilman Posh.
It is a big failure that we don't have this budget information sooner. ARPA has been a big failure. You guys have done a great job administratively to fix it. Now, we're going to have to fix this budget thing too, okay? But we can't be living on the last minute of everything, and we need to run things more through, I think, the process. I totally agree with you, we need to have some better expectations. I've asked to meet about this, okay? And it's it's hard to get us together to have that meeting. But I got to tell you, we need to be following procedures. We all need to be on board, or at least the majority of us on board, about what our expectations are.
We don't have much time now, but I I, you know, the mayor and I have talked about, you know, getting things back on track, not so many first readings for adoption, you know. Listen, I I'm just going to assume you do the best you can, and you're going to assume that we're going to complain sometimes because we want regular order and we do want things to go to committees. And this end of the year, I I do recognize that it is somewhat of an anomaly. I mean, there is a bottleneck of a lot of stuff going on. So everybody's kind of right about some of the stuff, and everybody's got a right to their feelings that we need to.
Yeah, I I just want to say that I I am frustrated, but I think that it's fair and justified for me to be frustrated. And someone may feel differently, but I don't think that it's fair for someone to tell me that it's not okay for me to be frustrated because the expectation was set that we would have this last week. And I understand that there's a lot going on. The expectation was set that we would have budget hearings this week. And so I took time off for my day job, I submitted a vacation request, that was approved. I'm going to have to use my vacation time. So if the expectation was set that we would get it last week and we're talking about maybe not getting it until ten AM, the start of the meeting, I am wholly within my right to be frustrated by that.
Of course, Vice President Russell, you get the last word.
Basically, I just want to know what to expect tomorrow.
So I think tomorrow is primarily the budget overview and then I think council, mayor's office, is finance on there?
Yeah, overall budget, finance, mayor's office, county court law, and council.
I mean, hey.
All of those in one day?
Yeah, and and this is all in an email on civic, the civic clerk. Oh, yeah.
What conversation did council have about our own budget? When did that happen? That's my point exactly. So this frustration that we have is ridiculous because when do we need to even have a conversation about our own budget?
We need to, we we did have a conversation about it. But we do need to adjourn and go to a regular meeting, so this meeting is adjourned, thanks.